Good afternoon, folks. See, we've got a pretty good crowd here. We'll probably have some more people come in later on after work. It's always important that we give citizens involvement and things like this because it is the thing that we're doing for the citizens of Granbury. So I do welcome everybody to come in here and be a part of this. The agenda for tonight, what we're going to be doing tonight is basically talking about what the city council had done when they approved a special election, made an attempt to determine whether or not the city council is going to be authorized, but not obligated, to offer for the sale of the city electric utility system. So what we'll be talking about tonight, folks, is we'll be laying out what this special election actually means to you. So you'll have a lot of the answers on what you'll be doing when you go to the polls to vote on this. So I'm going to turn this over to Wayne McKevan. He's going to go through a PowerPoint presentation with a lot of information on it. And then after we get done with that, we'll open it up for some questions and answers and stuff. And we do have our city attorney here with us and also some council members out there. And we'll be directing most of the questions to our city manager, Wayne McKevan, here. But if he gets stumped on something or got some things that the council or attorney can help him with, we will, okay? So thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, thanks. Yes, we wanted to, you know, it's not far away. And so we wanted to spend some time with our citizens and let them know some of the issues that we're putting forth. It was interesting, I was talking to some consultants and talking to them about what we're doing. And that is having this election to, like it says, give permission, but not obligation, to offer for sale the city's electric utility system. So what you've seen before, the other people that have done this, you know, how are we doing versus what they're doing? And they started laughing and they said, "No one's ever done this before." Okay? So you're the first. And so there's been sell private electric systems, but electric utility systems, but not in public. And so it's really important, we're sort of breaking some new ground here. But we did receive a lot of comments from citizens saying, "Why are we in a CCN? Why are we in a unique situation when we can't go out to the marketplace, which other cities can do?" And so we're going to try to answer some of those questions for you tonight. We're going to talk about what is a certificate of convenience and necessity, it's called a CCN. We're going to talk about the city's current long-term contract. And we're going to talk about the estimated timeline of key events based on what happens in the election. Okay, what is a CCN? Certificate of Convenience and Necessity gives exclusive rights to provide electricity in the CCN area. Now, the Public Utility Commission is the one that issues this document. And they were allowed in 1975 to basically come out with this because up until that time, there was quite a bit of, sort of like a wobble west up there. There were different electric companies going after different businesses. And before you know it, some electric company was not as good as the other and they were going out of business and people without electricity. And they said, "Wait a minute, we're going to control and regulate this." Plus, for people to make an investment in an electric utility takes a lot of money, okay? And so there needed to be some guarantee that if we spend all this money to build this electric utility system, that we need some guarantee that we'll have some customers and don't just, someone will just come in later and steal them all from us and then we spend the taxpayers' money. And that's why in the municipality situation, they were issuing CCNs to municipalities. Because we needed exclusive rights of service in order to protect investments in infrastructure when private industry wasn't interested in Granbury, okay? There was a time when Granbury wouldn't have electricity. If you go over to that utility plant that Lightpoint would have, it was built in 1923, okay? So Granbury was way ahead of its time, all right? They were out there supplying electricity to the city of Granbury as far back as that. But the CCN concept didn't come. We actually got our CCN, I think we looked it up, it was in '76 or '77, somewhere in that timeframe. And so we got the right to service a certain area of Granbury. And we don't service all of Granbury. Because the city grew. And as you know, United Co-op does service part of the city. And so they are proactive, they are a nonprofit, they're a big boy, okay? We have about 35, 40, 4,000 customers. They have 33,000 customers. So they're a big, a much bigger operation. But the fact that we did get the CCN, we do handle, it's primarily, and it's hard to say, it's sort of like our city limits, it's really varied, but it's more toward the north side of town. The south side of town is under United Co-op. And so, but once you have a CCN, you have the right to actually transfer the certificate. If in fact it comes to a point where you feel that the city, that, or that the citizens would rather be serviced by someone else other than the city, then we have the right to sell, to sign or lease the certificate or right of attainment or certificate if the Public Utility Commission determines that the person serving, the signee or less e, can provide adequate service. In other words, if we go out and try to sell, we can't sell to anyone, the Public Utility Commission does not think is a valid insurance, uh, electric company that can service. So there's protection there. And in fact, once that, that particular company would be identified...
Wayne?
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry.
I told you you'd make a mistake.
Ah, thanks for keeping me straight on. You know, at the time that we actually do that, then the sell, assign or lease of certificate or right of subvention conditions the commission prescribed. In other words, once they do see that we're interested in selling to a particular company, then they will come in with requirements to make sure that you get good service as handled on the Public Utility Regulatory Commission. We, you know, we have not done anything yet because first what we have to do is we have to go out and negotiate, and we have to talk to our citizens and see if they want to do it, and that's why we're having the election. Before we go to that, I wanted to talk about the current long-term contract. The city of Granbury, the city of Granbury negotiated a 10-year term contract with Brian and Texas Utilities from January 1st, 2008 through December 31st, 2017. The cost was paid to a long-term fixed price, including the cost of power, auxiliary charges and transmission costs. Additionally, the contract was very favorable. When, that was a period when natural gas was going crazy, it was what they call the good times around there. But natural gas was going through the roof. And natural gas is a big cost of electricity. A lot of the electricity generated by natural gas by our plants. And in fact, if you'll remember, we had just signed this contract, the council and mayor and city manager at that time. And natural gas prices went up to 14 or 15 and electricity costs went to, if you were, if you were caught floating, you had no contract. It got up to 19, I know Weatherford went to 19.9 cents. At the time, we were around 10 cents. And it was a tough time. A lot of people got bills that they couldn't even imagine. And so, but right after that, after the contract was signed, so for a year or so, the contract looked really good. It was, we had saved the citizens a lot of money. But then right after that, when the natural gas price cratered, and I remember the negotiations, they said, "If you'll go into a long-term fixed contract, we're building in that even if natural gas craters 50%, you're still going to be okay." And we would have done okay. Unfortunately, natural gas cratered 90%. You know, it went from 14 to 2. So at that point, if you were floating, okay, then you could offer lower rates. Our rate was set, okay? And it hasn't been set since 2008. So there are three and a half years left on that contract now. It goes through the end of 2017, December 31st, 2017. And that three and a half years, the current contract is non-cancelable unless renewed by both parties. And just like they couldn't cancel it when it was very favorable, the, the, the electricity provider can't cancel it, or we on the other side can't cancel it when it's not favorable. That was the whole thing, we're fixed price contract. So that's why you've seen that our costs are higher. And are in the range now of around less than 20% higher than what the market is. Maybe that's a question, I can show you that on the bills. But natural price, natural gas has been going up and with that, electricity prices going, ours won't change until the end of 2017. So let's go forward and talk about, and this is going to be, this is going to be pretty quick because what we want to do is get more into questions and make sure you have, but I'm just trying to explain to you, you have an electric company that's doing a great job in terms of service and we are locked in and out of contract. But we used to be the cheapest in four counties, okay? Until we actually had the contract expire during a time of high fluctuation, we had to sign a contract. You can always question the decision about whether we should have signed a long-term contract. But it was a contract we had to sign or we wouldn't have any electricity to sell it. But in the election, what we want to do is talk about how this impacts you. So you understand as you vote, because we as a city won't take a position on this. We have, we have a way to work through this either way, okay? This is something that's been raised by the citizens, okay? That say they want to have a chance, or at least to bring it forward, to talk about going to market and having an opportunity to have the market system with them. But here, May 2014, we'll have that election if permission to sell the electric system happens, if the results give approval. From mid-2014 to mid-2015, now I'm basing this on an actual purchase of a system that we have of a private company that was buying also another private company and how long it took to go to open market. But say for a year there, it could very well take negotiation and sell process. We'll have to go get appraisal of the system. We have to know, if we're going to sell taxpayers' assets, we've got to make sure we know what it is, what it's valued at. And we will hire an independent consultant to help us do that and get the actual value of the system first. So we'll know what the price is. Analysis of funding requirements. Nothing is simple in this process. Because the way that utility systems have worked for a lot, especially electric systems, is that we have, and it's regularly done this way, we have committed the revenues of all of our utility systems to all of the utility bonds. So every utility bond, revenue bond, is collateralized with revenue from the water, sewer and electric, all right? So if we were to sell the electric company, we will have to evaluate the price that we would get. First of all, we would have to go back and reissue all the revenue bonds, utility revenue bonds, and make them water and sewer collateral only, okay? But before we did that, we would have to make sure that the price that we sell the electric company for will pay off enough of the bonds so that the cash flow from the water and sewer will pay for all the expenses and all the bonds that are remaining after we sell the electric company. It's a pretty complex computation. We feel confident we can do it, but that's going to be a number that we have to come up with. And then we will reissue the remaining amount of bonds that we need for the larger sewer and what we can pay for. It, right now, we've done preliminaries. And I have to tell you, based on just sort of a, on the back of the envelope by a consultant of what we think the appraisal value of this electric system is, we're going to have to pay, we're going to have to sell this, the system for probably two to three times more than what the appraisal value is for this thing to work. Now, the odds of that, I've been amazed, okay? Because we've had a couple of companies approach us. And I've actually tried to scare them off and tell them what the situation is and they keep coming. So one of two things is happening, either that appraisal is not high enough or these people really want Granbury, okay? So that in itself is an interesting situation that we will continue, we have no choice. We have to give a certain level of, of sale price for this electric company or we go broke. That's the way it is. I mean, because we can only generate certain, or we have to raise the water rates a lot higher, okay? So we don't want any of those. We want it to done right and we will do it right, okay? We have already gone back, and you notice, and we have gone and we have changed the rate structure. So that now the electric company pays for itself in, in operational mode, the water system and the sewer system now pays for itself. No longer is the electric company subsidizing the water and sewer. And so people who use our water and sewer plant would cost us to generate water and sewer. And you say, "Well, gee, that could be a lot." Yes, it could be. Because we have to do desalination plants, okay? We have to build, we have to take salt out of the water. We don't just pump it out of the ground, we do pump it out of the ground. But when we use water out of the lake, what's left of it now, basically, it has too high salt content. And so we have to spend money on desalination plants to take that salt out. We haul the salt out in trucks, okay, to keep it healthy for you. And so that is another cost that we have because we get water out of the lake. We're getting ready to build a new plant, a water plant. That's going to be expensive. It's a desalination plant as well. But water's a serious situation. It's getting very, very serious. We've had to lower our intake valves because the water went under it. There's some people have no option to lower, we do. And so water will continue, water may get even more expensive as it gets less and less available for everybody, not just us. But once we do the analysis of the funding requirements, then the council has to decide whether they want to sell them. If you'll, if you'll look at the election, the election simply says you're given an approval for them, you know, to do it, but not obligated to do it. The situations that could come up that would say we could sell or not sell are very dynamic and they're very complicated. We don't know yet whether we want to sell it or not. We're just asking permission and we do come up with a good deal for the citizens. Can we sell it and not be obligated? Because if we're obligated, that's a bad situation because then we're, we're in, that they can press us, okay? You got to sell, run them off them so much. That's not the situation, that's why we worded it like we did. Then we will go forward, once, once we, if the decision is to sell it, then what we will do is we will do a bid process. We'll put out the bid, highest bidder gets it, or at least the best bid gets it. That's an analysis process. There may be something in the bid or in the promise that would be good that when combined with price might generate the best situation for the citizen. But we'll analyze that, then we'll have a negotiated sale. That'll all be going on at least for next year. The point here is your rates are not going down next week, or the week after May 10th. It is a complicated, long process to get you to the market here, if that's what the people want. Mid-2015 to mid-2016, once the company's identified and it's approved by the PUC, then we will go through what they call a test year for the rate case where they build the cost structure. Mid-2016 through 2017, they'll file the rate case with the PUC. Late, uh, late 2016 to early 2017, new rate approved by PUC. PUC does a lot of analysis. They go in and they analyze it. They make sure, like they said, these people can do what they say. And when you get into a regulated body, it doesn't always happen real fast. And so then between late 2017 and early 2018, there will be a transition to competition. What that means is the public will have to get used to going and recruiting their own electric companies. The city, the city will get out and sell to the, to the whatever company at the negotiating itself. You will be responsible for going negotiating with whoever you want for electricity. There is 15, 20 companies. But we will have an education process that teaches you how to go look for those, what to look for, what are the pluses and minuses of particular things offered. There will be an education process for you to decide who you will go with buying your electricity. Then there's a, a transfer to the market accessibility. That's when they will open up, there will be a period of time when you will open up and you'll be able to choose your, your, uh, electric provider and you'll do so. That's the process. It's a complicated process, it's a long-term process. And we wanted everyone to know about that. And it just so happens, and you say, "Gee, this is such a coincidence." No, it's not. It's not. The end of the process ends at the end of the long-term contract. When they said an end verse situation. It's not, it's just not an accident that companies have now shown up when in fact the process takes the same amount of time as for the contract to expire. No one's going to come and get us out of the contract. Or at least we don't know of anybody that's going to. It's $10 to $12 million, okay? Now, that doesn't mean it's stable because of the rates, the rates change, the electricity costs is going up and this goes up, the value of that contract adversity goes down. It's over the, it's 30 after four years. So that's, that's why it's not an accident. No company showed up to do it, to buy our system until now because it'll take that long to, to end the contract. If election results does not approve the sale, okay? Once again, we've got answers. This is not, this is not the city saying, "We want to sell, that we are going to sell." It's the citizens giving us approval, that's all it is. If the denial to sell electric system is on May 14th, from May 14th, from May 2014 to to mid, I'm sorry, May 10th, 2014. From May 2014 to mid-2016, there's no change. We have, we have no reason to change because we're in a long-term locked-in contract. Mid-2016 to late 2017, we will start because in, on December 31st, 2017, we don't have any electricity to sell, okay? Once again, we're just like they're out there buying, just like everybody else. So in that process, we're going to start looking at the prices for short-term electricity. Years 2018 and 2019, oh, okay. 2019, okay? For 2018 and 2019, we're looking at buying those contracts. If we do nothing through 2017, the rates will stay the same. If the rates at that time are the same, then it's not a benefit to us to do anything other than to buy the contracts, okay? And to get that lined up so we have electricity in 2018 and 19. If the, if the prices are lower than their lease, is an opportunity perhaps for the last year. Because we don't have a big reserve sitting in the utility fund. It's a million eight, million nine right now. But we're getting rid of $14 million of revenue. Now, when you cut your paycheck $14 million and you only got a million dollars in, a million eight in your checking account, that can be a little risky if you hadn't thought it through, okay? So there's no, we don't make money, a lot of money on utilities. If you look at our CAFRs, our financials, there's not a lot of money made in the utility system. In fact, it's pretty much break even. And now it breaks even for every utility. But if the rates are lower for the 2018, as we get there, if you can't buy a 2018 contract now that's a lot cheaper, you got to wait till it gets real close. Because as you get closer, the rates go down to actual. If you buy it three or four years out, they're putting in risk factors and everything else, so the price is still high. But as you get closer, if the rates are still in the four, three to four range instead of the eight range, then we could possibly look at doing an average for the last year, which would perhaps lower your rate the last year. But we don't know. We really just don't know. If I knew what the 2018 and 19 rates, like everybody says, I'd be a rich man, okay? And so would you, okay? But what we do know, that we'll start looking at that, if we can help the residents in any way, if we still own the system, we would work to do that, just like we've done for all, for a lot of things. So that basically is an overview that says, "What would our citizens like to do?" So we're here, I've given you an overview, make sure you understood that the rates aren't going to change much, and then either way. And we basically have to decide if you like the process to go to market. Because no matter we decide to go to the deregulated market, you're going to have to go through the same process. So if you wait five years and say, "Man, I wish we'd have gone to the deregulated market," well, you've got this whole three-year process to go through again, okay? So that doesn't, that shouldn't be a negative other than that you just understand that that's what we've got to do, whenever we do it. And so I guess at this point, Stuart, do you have anything you want to say? Brad?
I think you did good.
Okay.
How long the election will be good?
Oh, the election's good forever. Once you tell us we, you can, I don't know if anybody's ever came back and said, "You can't sell the system for Granbury." That's not something we put on the agenda. So once you tell us that we can sell it, it's an asset of the city, then we wait until a bid comes that we basically feel is good for the citizens. And the reason they think that way, and the reason that Public Utility Commission doesn't regulate cities and cooperatives, is that, you know, we're already, we are already part of that democratic process. They're there to protect the people and the people have elected the people to make those decisions. So the PUC says, "We're out of this because you already have a voice in how it's handled." And it's only for the private companies that are not necessarily oriented to people is the ones they regulate. Okay, questions? Uh, yeah?
Why, just so that I understand the clue of why. It's my understanding. Trying to lose my big voice.
I might have to go off.
Okay. Trying to lose my big voice.
No?
Am I, yes. To my understanding, the positive side of voting yes, besides the possibility down the road, all the process is going to be 2017, either way we go, timelines. But by voting yes, it will allow the city to go ahead and start that process so that, which they couldn't do until 2017 unless we vote yes. That they can start the process and we can be at that spot for, for making a decision rather than waiting until 2017 and start the process anyway.
Yes, that's my understanding. Now, I hate to go into this, but I probably should. The cooperatives are not regulated, just like the municipalities are not regulated. United Co-op is not regulated by the PUC because they have members that vote on their board too. So, and I talked to the Public Utility Commission today about this, okay? So, and he was, he was resistant to the comment. Now, he didn't want to do it. But he said, "I will tell you, the Public Utility Commission does not regulate them either, okay? So if the cooperative has rules within their own legislative body that says whoever that cooperative might be, it's different with different cooperatives. I mean, they run their business just like any other business, you know, how they want to. It's possible, but not probable," that was his orders, "that they could absorb that big $10 million and spread it to all their other customers, okay? And go ahead and charge everybody the same rate." So just so you know, it is a possibility. Now, if you're a United Co-op, uh, customer... Now, if you're a United Co-op, uh, customer, you might not be too excited about that, okay? So, United Co-op would have to make that decision, so we don't know. We do not know what they would do, we're out of the picture, the city's out of the picture. And United Co-op would make that decision, or whoever, okay? And that not, just so you know, there could be, I was talking to a consultant today too, just to make sure I understood everything. And he said, he had sold one in Kentucky, okay, the municipality. And they were able to get twenty different, I think it was twenty different bids, okay? And he said, they sold it for two million dollars. And I said, we'll take two, two million dollars for, like you're coming right now, okay? He said, no, I don't think so, it was about ten, twelve times better than you sold. Um, but anyway, he said, and let me tell you this, if you know anybody that's got an extra fourteen, fifteen million dollars, might want to buy a electric company, let us know. Cause the more people we have bidding on this thing, the better off. I, I, I knew a company that might be interested, and sure enough, they are, okay? Through my other work, I, I called and asked them, yeah, we'd be interested. So basically, if you know anybody, cause it's a bid process, okay? It's not, gee, let's give it to these people, cause we like them, it's who has the best offer, the most money. It's gonna be a certain level of money, alright? And so, uh, and that's just a starting bid, fourteen, fifteen million is what we need. So, if you know of anybody, you know, or you in your businesses, you deal with that in any way, we're open to communicating with anybody that even citizens know as well, if you're interested in selling. If we're not interested in selling, that's fine too. So, to your answer, I would say it's highly probable, you know, that it'll be three years before there's any changes, okay? But even if the new company, if a private company takes over, they're gonna have to run it until they get through all that process, okay? And so what their rate is would be, now, if it's a private company, it will be regulated by the Public Utility Commission. I did confirm that today. They would confirm, they would regulate not only, uh, they would regulate the price during the time of the transition as well. And so that's a good thing, cause they would look at the price to make sure it was not exorbitant. Uh, yeah?
I've got a question. Uh, I live outside the city limits, we live in Spanish Trail. We buy electricity and our water from the city. Then we live outside of the city limits, are we gonna be eligible to vote for or against the, uh, sale?
No.
Why not? We pay, we pay rates, we, just like everybody else does, so why can't we?
That's the law.
The law, I think that's the city's law, that doesn't sound fair. Doesn't sound fair to y'all? That's alright, but we pay a lot higher rates for our water than y'all do. And we pay, we pay our electric rates just like everybody else. So we should have the same op, uh, opportunity to vote for or against it as anybody else.
Wayne, I can address that. Um, the, the answer is because the government code says that city elections, like this one here, are governed by the same rules of the elections that you vote for city council members. And if you live outside the city limits, you don't get, you don't get votes for city council, despite the fact that council covers your utilities. So, this election is to be held just like any other city election, that would be, um, for a bond issuance or for city council.
I don't think it's fair.
Contact your legislature.
I will, and I'll talk to the PUC office.
Not a problem, we appreciate that.
Have a question, if you'd like.
Yeah, Mr. Martin?
Wayne, I got about five questions, so sure answer your question. All right, under the current contract in place, uh, we are upside down, what twenty percent you say about that deal, it's, we're paying a higher rate than maybe we could.
Oh, yeah, if, if you, uh, would you go to the page, oh, you're, there's a page after questions. You know, we hear all the time, gee, we're paying these exorbitant rates, and I, I agree they're higher, five, twenty percent. But, go to the one after questions, after questions, yeah? There's a slide after questions.
Want to have her?
Yep. I hit that for you, okay? This is an actual bill from one of the people in United Co-op, and United Co-op's a great company, okay? I mean, they, they got their act together, they're a big company, they have great negotiating power. And we copied, the number is awful, that person's bill. She had a hundred and ten dollars, a hundred and ten point seven four bill. And we ran it through the city grant areas, one thirty-two, it's about nineteen percent difference. And, uh, you know, that's, that's, that's money. But, and I hear these people had seven or eight hundred dollar electric bills as well. I mean, United Con, under United Co-op, you'd have a six hundred and fifty dollar electric bill. Does that make a funny matter? Maybe it does. But it's still, the rate, cause see, they do have different charges that they, that they do. Their rate, when it adds up, adds right down to nine point sixteen, alright? And we're at ten point eight three. So, you know, it is some money, and if that's worth getting out. There's been people say, the service levels that you get from the cities. I know our guys are out there in the middle of the night working, they're working, they work hard, they do a good job. Is that service worth it? Then fine, if it's not, you're gonna make that decision, because all these companies you see, I know, I contacted a guy one time when I was living out at, uh, I was living outside the city, I forget. I know at the Con, I was with TXU out there. But anyway, when I was living outside the city, I contacted one guy, I saw his rate was unusually low. He was a guy from Dublin that, that paid a thousand dollars and got a certificate. He's buying and selling electricity. And as long as he makes the right decisions, he makes money. If he doesn't make it, he's out a thousand bucks, it goes out of business, and you're in the pool, okay? Well, it's not good. You wonder where all these electric companies came from. It's pretty easy to get a distribution electric company. Now, the PUC's putting the, the quiet on that, because you have to be able, he has contracts with distributors and with, um, with, uh, generators. But if he goes out of business, he goes out of business. So, there, there's things you're gonna have to be very aware of if you do go out in that market, because you're gonna have to go with a reputable company. And here, the difference is about nineteen percent, we did the consultation, you know, it was nineteen percent? Yeah. And so, that's what we're talking about is, as a big bill. And, yes, the winner, I, I'm on United Co-op, okay? And my bill for this last winner was about thirty, forty percent higher because of the consumption, okay, because it was cold, okay? And I used more than I did before. So, hopefully we won't have that kind of winner again in the very, very future. So, yes, you have another?
So Wayne, under the, like you said, under the current contract, e- everything is pretty much pegged to the price of natural gas, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so what are?
No, under contract, it's, it's straight.
It's just a trade?
Yeah, it's not pegged at all.
Alright, well, we're pegging.
We wish it was.
But figured on the price of natural gas, and, and it's a big component of how it's figured. Alright, so what are the city's options under the current contract? At the end of twenty seventeen, December thirty-first, twenty seventeen, do, does the city currently hold the option to extend for another ten years? Let, let's just say magically that this contract now becomes favorable. Do you have an option to extend, or are you going back out to?
I'm going back out.
You're going back out no matter what?
I can't imagine any of the council being in a mood to go another ten years, but, you know.
So you don't even have that option right now?
We don't wanna think about that, I don't think, cause it's too volatile right now.
Okay, alright, so, uh, so one way or the other, you're going to the market to try to determine somebody's, if you're gonna continue to own it with a company?
No, 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 we won't, well, if we're there in two thousand seventeen and we haven't sold, we'll go out to the market to buy wholesale electricity. And we'll buy it, so we can buy it in one-year terms, three-year terms, five-year terms. Before this contract, it was a three-year term. And, uh, you know, that would've been great, we'd have been in that, we'd have come back in the market again. But, um, we'll go back in the market and buy electricity again, okay, just like we did in two thousand seventeen.
So I think that's what I was trying to get to, is, is that at the end of twenty seventeen, no matter what happens, up or down vote, you guys are going back to renegotiate a contract with somebody else at some new rate or whatever it is?
Yeah, and the rate should get much closer to market if we're staying within short terms, short-term contracts.
Okay, and just like you were highlighting there, if the city chooses to sell to somebody like United Cooperative Services, there is no marketplace out there. United Cooperative Services has, for lack of a better term, a monopoly on the area that they service.
No, that's the case.
And they set the rate that they're choosing.
That's right. And the PUC does not.
Does not regulate them at all. So, I mean, there, there, there is some benefit to the city maintaining ownership of this thing after twenty seventeen. You've got a lot more flex, flexibility.
I wasn't gonna say that. Can't, can't take your opinion, can't make an opinion.
Alright, alright, thanks Wayne.
I'm wondering, if, if, of course, your goal is to sell it for the highest price possible, but wouldn't that be turned back to the customer and they would end up paying high dollar for it every month?
Uh, not necessarily, I mean.
To a utility company?
It's whatever the market bears, okay? They're gonna have to make that decision, what they pay for it. All I said was, for us to sell it, we've gotta pay off some bonds, or we're gonna run out of money in our utility fund, okay? So, your, your point is, if that's too much money for them to make a profit, or even to break even, then we probably won't sell the system. I mean, cause we have to have a certain level of money, and they have to pay more than a certain amount. But it's a private decision. Now, what we've heard people say is, hey, it's a long-term, it's a long-term decision, we'll advertise it over thirty years, it won't impact the customer that much, right?
Is it something that?
I don't know that, I mean, that's what, I've heard some people say that's their logic, I, uh, you know? I, I like paying more than what the appraised value is, but we have to just make sure we get the appraised value or more, and we'll do that.
Does it have to be voted on before we learn about it? I mean, uh?
No, you're voting on it now. You're saying, either we have, you're giving us the approval to go sell it, if we decide to. So you're deciding now?
Well, what's that been about a long time, they had to, before they learned about it?
That's how the government works? No, I'm just saying, that is not the situation, we do not, I, I believe that's true, right? Isn't it true that we don't come back? Yeah?
Hey Wayne, back here. So you talked about the, the emergency fund, the, the, uh, the excess revenues for the utilities. Have you split those up between the different utilities? On a, on an annual basis, what would you say are the, is the net revenue from the electric side of it?
The net revenue with what? The net revenue with the allocation cost?
What does this part of the city make?
The electric?
Yes.
Well, right now, operationally, at the, at the net income level without paying off the bonds, it's break even.
It's a break even with the bonds, so if we pay off the?
No, it's a break even, well.
It's the servicing of the debt.
Yeah, it's a, it's a break even, it's an operational break even right now. And we do allocate like one-third, I think, of the revenues, or one-third of the cost to all of the utilities across for the debt service. And that's where not all of the debt, not one-third of the debt is related to electric. Most of the debt is related to water and sewer.
So, it, it, it does subsidize it, so my, I guess my question is?
The debt service, yeah.
Right, so I guess my question, how many employees do you, would you say work on the electric side? How many city employees?
Uh, ten at most, right?
So those ten folks, we're basically, are we voting?
Is that right, ten? About ten, isn't there about ten people in the electric, uh?
There's seven.
Seven, okay.
So, of those seven people, are we, are we in effect voting for their jobs?
No, not necessarily. I mean, in fact, they're gonna be in a really strong position if we sell, because if we sell, then those people, those are the people that know most about what, how the system works, where the strong points, weak points are. Uh, now, I would, I would say they'll be in a strong position. In fact, everybody would need their knowledge and expertise.
So in the corporate world, when a company buys another company, and they come in and say, hey, know where your jobs are safe? That is always the case?
It may be the contract, they're gonna get hired?
Well, it might be part of the negotiation. I mean, I've already had people tell me, and that they need the knowledge. Now, none of us is hired forever, okay?
Well, I understand, I understand that.
I mean, you know, but for two or three years, there's gonna be a transition process that, you know, I, I've gone through probably six or seven acquisitions, and been the acquisitioner and the acquisitionee. Yeah, it's part of life now, I mean, my kids basically have already been bought and sold like three times in fifteen years. It is amazing what's going on down in the market. If everybody thinks they have a long-term job, I would, you know, we don't.
Let me, let me ask a question, you said that the electric, are the electric revenues used to service all of the debt across the board, correct? To subsidize the others?
No, 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 not all, no.
You said across the three, the, the water, sewer?
Oh, yeah, water, sewer, and electric, no, electric and pay all the debt, I thought it was just that.
But it's served, it helps subsidize the others. So, how do we make up for the revenue lost when we sell this company? I know it would be?
We sell it for three times the appraised value and pay off the bonds.
In theory?
No, not in theory, in reality.
Okay, so we, so we live off the interest of the bonds, is that what, of the, of the profits?
No, we pay off the bonds.
I understand that, but once that debt is retired, then we have an excess, where does that go?
What excess?
You just said we sell it for three or four times, we have, so we have excess revenue from the sale.
No, you sell, you sell it so that you pay off enough of the bonds, so that the water and sewer revenue separate from the remaining bonds. There is no excess. Yes?
We're, we're talking service, we'll, we'll talk about this prior to that.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Inge, have the next question?
Yeah.
A big part of the equation, of course, aside from the rates, is the quality of the service. And I'd like to say that we think the quality of the service we get, the responsiveness and the personnel is excellent. Much better than United Co-op. I did service with United Co-op, and if you like it or lump it, we really did not get any satisfactory relationship with them. The other thing that I, I've understood over the years, that this was a money-making proposition, that the electric service was a money-making proposition for the city. Well, of course, that does want the, the customers, of course, would like to benefit from some of that through lower prices. And you're in a tight spot where you can't respond that way, but that won't be forever. And if that's a money-making deal, the city needs sources of revenue. And if you've got a good operation, and you're, you have the prospect of being able to be more competitive soon, thirty-six months is not all that long. Just, uh, there's an opportunity that it seems to me that you can give up if you're gonna, if the service is turned over to somebody who does not have the close relationship that we've got here at this time.
And I will tell you this, I can't make an opinion, but I do have an opinion on our people. Our people are great, and they deliver a good level of services, no doubt about that. So I agree with you on that.
I have a question, Wayne.
Okay.
Stuart, if I get out of hand here, clap me down, cause I'm gonna say something that will get me in trouble, as usual. Did what, Judy?
Okay, okay, shut it down, right?
Okay, the question is this, Wayne. It's gonna take three years regardless if we sell or don't sell. We're just getting a vote to say do or don't sell it. It would still take us three years. If we bought gas from today's market platform, what gas market way it is, would our prices be the same or would it be lower?
If we bought, if we could buy it.
Right now, we could buy it.
We can't buy it, but if we could buy it, it's lower.
If we're in the open market right now?
Mm-hmm, it'd be lower.
Lot lower?
Uh, you know, a lot lower is a, a term, I, I don't know if it's a lot lower, I mean, we could look to buy, uh, you know, our contract is with Bryan Texas Utilities, and they were gonna come in and look at offering us a contract, a longer-term contract. And they were, at this point, to get out through four years, it was gonna be about the same still.
But if you bought it on the day of the market, it would be cheaper?
If you were buying short-term, which we just talked about. If you could just buy one year, if you could buy two thousand fourteen contracts, yeah, they're lower.
Okay.
But we can't do that.
Alright, the next, yeah, because we're under contract.
Right.
Okay, the next question is, is, if we're gonna hang on to it, even if we vote to sell and if we can sell it, we still would have to keep it for what? End of our contract?
Well, we will, you know, if, okay, did you ask if we sell it? If we sell it, we'll sell it in the next year, okay? We would sell...
We'll sell it, but they're not gonna take over until end of our contract.
But the company that buys it will go through a process that won't change the rate until they go to market, or the PUC will decide what that rate is.
Do you think if the company should buy us out, you don't think they'll have employees that knows what they're doing?
Not for this system.
How come?
Well, it's very, you can ask those guys, it's a pretty unique system, it's, you know, I, they told us that there's a need for knowledge of the system for a period of time, and it's, it would take a while, so.
Alright.
That's what I'm understanding. And, you know, it's not unusual for them to put in the contract that, you know, you would employ the people for a certain period of time. We could pass it as part of negotiation. If one company offers us less money and offers to hire the, keep the city, the employees on, then that's part of what's best for the city and what's best for, you know, what's going on, and we might take the lower price and, and then guarantee the, of jobs for the people. That's the negotiation process, okay? We'll have to go through that and see what the council wants to do.
Um, yes, my question is if the city does sell and we get whatever we get for it, this may sound silly, but this building we're in, City Hall, the service center, the ballparks, the airport, Spanish Trail, like that gentleman said, street lights, I'm assuming right now we don't pay for our own electricity. So, is that, we're gonna end up, the city itself is gonna end up having to pay for our electric that we do not have to pay right now? Like I said, this building we're sitting in right now?
Well, we do pay for our own electricity and we pay the market rate, so.
But we'll be just like everybody else then, so we'll get money upfront, but in the long run, I would think we would be losing money.
Um, no, we're paying, the city pays the market rate for the electricity to run these lights. And the area that, in other words, the general, and I don't get too out of context here, but the general fund will pay the utility fund the rate that this electricity costs, and so we'll just simply pay up to whoever else owns it at that point.
Okay, I just wanted to, people to, you don't realize, it's just residential homes you're talking about, and a lot of city buildings, that's also city electric too.
Yes. I'll take that one, one up here.
Can we get back to the right conversation? What are the next?
Okay.
When you had your discussion, you said there's a price that the purchaser of the assets is gonna pay, and then we, if this happens, then we will go out and select a rate that we're gonna recharge for our electricity. So, there's, there are two components to the new structure, and if it is, the ten point eight three that you have there, does that include...
Includes everything.
So, it's the way you and the cost for the city to run the electric department and everything else?
And we pay the transmission to Brazos Electric, which transmits it from Bryant Texas to here. I mean, we, and that's all the charges in the ten point eight three. You can see they break up their charges into energy charge and some other things, but the key, the key is down there at the nine point one six, or point oh nine one six. That's their rate that you compare to the ten eight three. But you see, you know, our people, our customer charge is a little higher than theirs, theirs is ten, ours is thirteen seventy-five.
Okay. So, if you sell the system, our electric bill will have two items on it then? One, from whomever we select to get our electricity from?
I don't, I don't know that. I don't know who buys it and what their bill's gonna look like. You know, a cooperative, this, this is a cooperative, so they break it out, but you may find corporates that don't break it out, and they just have one rate like we have here. You know, it, we just don't know until the person, until the company buys it, and then we'll know what the bid was.
Is the breakout of ten point eight three public information, or you can tell us what that is? What you're paying BTU?
Yeah, I think so. We haven't broken out, we could compute it, I guess. We just choose a rate that we think know that covers what we need to cover. Uh, we don't really worry about the different components, but we're okay with breaking out, because it's all part, it's in the cost that we're looking at overall. We don't really get too concerned about breaking it out, but we can, right? We feel comfortable, we could break out the trans, we could break out the amount we pay Brazos, we could break out the amount we pay BTU.
But our, our cost is the same, our transmission cost changes, but we keep the rate stable.
But for any time, any time period, we can do that computation, so.
Yeah, we can do that computation, but we keep our rate stable, we don't change it. Other electric companies change based on a factor, and our transmission cost changes as well, we just gotta notice that it changed, but we keep our rate the same.
Yeah, and we'll be happy to share our audited financials, so we don't make any money in utilities, so. It's sort of a non-question really in terms of how it's spent, it's all spent and it's gone, so, yeah.
Wayne, having discussed this at length, the MUDAT, some occurred to me, is it possible that the city go out and partner up with other city-owned municipalities when we go out and bid this contract so we can leverage a larger contract size? Is that legal?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Which is a solid, right?
Yeah, we might wanna, if, if we keep the system, we might wanna look at that as to try and do some type of consolidation.
Kind of form of buying co-op.
It helps our buying, it helps our position buying.
Right, absolutely right.
Okay. That's a good idea.
I'm not sure, I don't know if you watch the price of natural gas. Look, there's been so many things lately to have, to have contact, to say make the price of natural gas go up. All of the people, they're all with the suits on the, when they're fracking these wells, and this is not just in Texas, this is all over. And they're actually making them not produce some wells because of it, and it's getting more expensive to produce it. So, anyway, you look at, natural gas is going to go up, because even though it's out there, it's gonna be so regulated, because you might contaminate my water. But that's gonna be a factor. We, nobody has, that's what, that's what hurt their last contract, is we didn't know what it was gonna do. You know, it was bid, right, and, and at that time, but everything doesn't go the way you want to. So, we've got to, you've got to think, how do you think it's gonna be in the future as far as the value of this? And how much is natural gas gonna cost? So, anyway, that's rural, that's Texas, all of the, all of it is, it's not, it's there, they're not on the bill to support it.
Wayne, just add on what Mr. Inge was saying, what is the, what is the net effect of every new customer, both commercial and residential in Grand, on the Grandbury system today? Is it positive or negative? I mean, are you, every new customer you're adding, is it costing you more money or is it reducing the cost?
I'm gonna think about that a second. Since we're primarily a variable rate, most of our cost is variable rate, I would say it doesn't make, I mean, it, it, it does spread the fixed cost a little more thin, so that helps, but, you know, and it's not a, because our, because our rate is just one rate times usage, most, seventy, eighty percent of the cost is variable, okay? So, you know, it doesn't, it, I don't think it has a whole lot of impact, it just sends the cost up more, so. I have to look at that, I just, just trying to think off the top of my head, I don't know if, adding a lot now, and it has nothing to do with electric, because where we're going with water and sewer, you saw much higher minimums, and we moved to rates, and we raised, we had tiers, and so depending on the type of customers you add, that's positive versus negative, okay? When you have just a one rate times consumption, when you add more consumptions, it doesn't have a lot of change. And we're landlocked now, just so you know, our system can't really expand much, and so it's not like we're out there trying to grow bigger or anything, we're pretty much locked in in our, in our area now, so. Do you think you had a question?
Yeah, Wayne, I'm a bit confused, and I'm certain that other folks here are just as confused. I don't, I don't wanna put the city, and particularly the council members, on the spot, but you're asking the citizens to make a vote based on a lot of facts that are certainly undeterminable at this particular time. My philosophy is, is that if we can control this and manage it well, why can't we be just as competitive in the marketplace with our own citizens through the city as other cooperatives and other electric service companies are presently doing and making a profit at it? And then on the other side of the coin is, is we haven't heard from the city council in saying, how, how does the council feel about this move? What is the city council's position? Is this a favorable thing that we should truly consider as citizens and move forward? Or should we make the system work from within and continue to control our own destiny?
As far as why you haven't heard from the council, I can just say that the law doesn't allow the city to take a stand. The city has to stay neutral, and all the materials that the city publishes with public funds have to be informative in nature and cannot take a position one way or the other. So, it would be improper for a council person to, in their official capacity, take a position either pro or con.
And, and what the council did do though was they, they selected, or they, they chose to call for the special election, and that's where we're at right now. After they have chose to do that, then it's up to the citizens to vote whether or not they want to, wanna go forward with it or not to go forward with it. My, and bear in mind, we can be drifted off a little bit on different things, and this is good, this is good to understand exactly why where we're at right now, but the meaning of the whole thing is that we are asking, the citizens are out there, let the citizens know what the vote means to them. And the vote merely means that we, we allow the company, we allow the city manager and the, and the council people to negotiate, to negotiate with somebody. Nothing may not, we may not do nothing, we may not do nothing at all with, or we may negotiate with somebody, but it doesn't say yes or no that we're gonna change the race, it doesn't say yes or no that we are gonna enter into a contract with anybody. It just allows the council and the city manager to, to continue with what the timeline there said, to, to continue to negotiate. And that's what we're here for right now.
Yeah, and to this point, the, the council's not bringing this up, citizens have brought this up, the council just agreed to put, we're spending taxpayer money on an election, and so there are people on both sides of the situation, so we don't wanna take a position, we want the people to tell us what they think, so we'll go forward. That's, that's the logic you're asking, why you haven't heard from us. We're not supposed to say what we're not.
Should there have been more informational meetings like this for the public to get more informed with this before the vote coming up so soon?
Uh, you know, I think, you know, you see the turnout here tonight, you know, we're certainly, we're gonna, I think, yeah, this is being taped, they can watch it on, on our TV channel. Uh, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have, you can give us a call, but it's, you know, you can have a lot of meetings, but I think you'd have the same result. There's some people interested in the community and there's some that's not, so, sort of the way it is.
Wayne, I'll say one thing, that, that I don't, I don't want the people to think I'm against it. I don't tell them things that I'm for or against it. We had to vote to put it out before bidding, thank you, Jerry. We had to vote to put it out before bids. Doesn't mean, I'm speaking for myself, not the rest of the council, that I'm for this, okay? Doesn't mean I'm against it either. We'd gotta be neutral, like the attorney said. The only way we'd ever have an election, we had to vote to have it. We did have citizens that said they did want us to sell it, we had, citizens said, "Want y'all to keep it?", kinda like some of the gentlemen said here tonight, you know, pay off the debt, get rid of our contract. I went on the council ten years ago, or six years ago, seven, when they made this contract. If gas would went up like it thought it was, they'd been the smartest council ever. Well, it didn't, it went down. And as long as I sat on the council, I wouldn't have ever went over a three-year contract. That's one vote, and one vote of it. Ms. Myers?
You just said exactly what I said. Uh, you know, when this was brought up at council, I was really surprised that there wasn't more people in attendance to hear that we had to vote whether or not the power, you know, the electric company was gonna be sold. So, as a voter, and, you know, I, I'm on United Co-op, and I'm gonna vote whether or not this is going to be sold or not, and so I'm a little bit like that gentleman up there. Why am I voting on something that doesn't affect me? So, I, I personally hope that, you know, more information gets out in paper, and more people write us and tell us how they feel, and more people get more involved in the city so that we can make informed decisions. You know, I'm disappointed at the turnout, because I don't wanna vote yes or no and then somebody be disappointed because we didn't, we don't have enough information. I know which way I'm leaning, because I'm, I'm more about information, but I still have to represent the citizens, so I'm asking people to get involved in this decision and quickly get back to us and tell us how they feel.
Okay. But Jerry?
Somebody else?
One thing I might add is just having, having all this small cc in, there might be a buyer out there that wants to pay a real premium for it. This, the only way you'll find out is if we put it out to bid. And my understanding that the MUDAT board, the vote was to okay, or recommend for the election, but that any decision would be brought back to the MUDAT board and back to the council, and publicly, it would be explained to the council or to the citizen before a vote was taken to sell it or not to sell it.
Well, the council will be the ones to vote to sell it, I'm outside.
So, the citizens will have another chance.
Be able to speak at the meeting.
At the city council meeting, and I would assume there'd have to be a public hearing type of process on that.
To your point, you know, you won't have meetings, but you'll have an agenda that you can talk about.
Exactly.
Quick question and follow-up to the council. Did you say you're on United Co-op, that you'll be able to vote in this election? This gentleman up here is in United Co-op, but he's, well, you're talking about your council vote or a constituent vote?
I live in the city.
So, we have people living in the city that are on United Co-op, and we have...
That can vote on this election, because it is city assets.
There are more people in the city on United Co-op, I know that it is, on our city.
So, there were, there were left.
It's about a half, or half, us half, United Co-op in it, something like that. I mean, we have four thousand customers, so we have eighty-five hundred people in our city, so, you know, it's in that range, so, but yeah, that's the way the state legislature just set up the election process, so, that's what we're doing.
I love you.
Okay.
Just to clarify something in my mind, you said we have about four thousand customers on the Grandbury Electric. Is there any possibility that, I'm assuming this is considered a pretty small union of customers to be... customers to be buying electricity?
Midsize.
Was it midsize?
Yeah, a little bit to midsize.
Okay.
Only about, only about fifteen percent of cities on electric companies, I know. Very, about eighty-five percent of cities don't.
Would that possibly be because if, if we were under the buying electricity from someone, say like United Co-op, that they would have an opportunity, because of their sheer size, to get a better price on their electricity, which they could therefore give to their customers? That we're never gonna have that opportunity through Grandbury Electric? I'm asking that question.
I would say Bryan Texas Utility, who has the plants it generates, if United Co-op came and sat down, they'd be real interested in getting down to the integrity of those people, as opposed to, they, they like us, we're good sized, but, you know, size, you know, is, is important in the industry, so, basically, you know, you know, there's perception that yes, larger companies have a competitive advantage in getting bids for electricity at high volumes, you know? I can't confirm that, I just know that's what I always heard. I think they do know. Uh, Tim, he's our manager of electric companies, so there's a guy that knows what's going on.
To address that question that was just asked, United Co-op buys the power from Brazos Electric, and because they are RE Co-op, they get a little better rate than us to start with. We couldn't, we couldn't go with Brazos and get the same rate that United Co-op gives. And another thing, the United Co-op, well, here on the board, your United Co-op figures are current figures, and current energy charges and everything else, that rate can vary with United Co-op. That rate, you know, if, if like what Mr. Perkel was saying, if the gas prices go outside, their rate goes up to, you know, it could go up to the same as us, or it could go even higher, so that's something you need to look at too. We're a fixed price.
Yeah, they are floating, so, to a certain degree. They have makes to fix and float. And to Mr. Eng's comment, yes, the electric company was making money till we lowered the rate from 12.69 to 10.83, and we took it back to breakeven, because we didn't want them subsidizing. If we're gonna go through with this, first of all, the electric, the electric utilities, the customers didn't want, they were clamoring for a lower rate because of salt, or United Co-op, so we took it down as low as we could to keep it at breakeven. And then raised the water rates to, you know, to offset, and we got a pair of bills, and so we can't just cut one, because we're breakeven, we cut one, we gotta raise the others. It's like a pie, how you wanna cut it? Somebody else?
What, what percent of the city's revenue comes from electric utilities? Is it an infinitesimal amount?
No, it's, it's very serious. I mean, eighteen million dollars is a big revenue source. Our annual earnings are six and a half million, or six, yeah, it's right around six to six and a half million, our sales taxes, six and a half million, our franchise fees are a million and a half. Uh, that just gives you some, some revenue.
So this is a very significant income source for the city of Grandbury?
Boy, yeah, it's a big expense as well, so it's...
Still a breakeven.
It's still a breakeven.
I'm talking about bottom line, are we talking one percent of eighteen million?
Oh, no, we're talking about bottom line, it's not a big impact to the city. Bottom line is net zero, pretty much.
Gross, gross annual sales is what, again?
Uh, gross for all, well, for, for electric, it's around fourteen million, and then, am I right here, fourteen million?
Twelve.
Twelve, I'm sorry. And then water is around four million, and sewer is around two million.
Okay, so that's...
Total around eighteen million dollars.
That's big dollars coming in, but what is the bottom line of those big dollars? Is it zero percent? You know, that's 1.8 million dollars.
Now, we also have eighteen million dollars worth of expense, okay?
Zero. Basically, it's a breakeven deal. So we're out there fluttering our wings and jumping around and dancing and spending a lot of time and energy, and we're not...
But we're delivering utilities. Otherwise, you wouldn't have electricity.
Yes, but I do, because I'm a part, I'm one of those that likely, I guess, are part of the United Co-op system. So I can't honestly take a unbiased or biased vote, because my service is satisfactory. So I couldn't even be able to go to the polls and vote for something that doesn't affect them, but I guess I do have that right, Tim.
You have that right. She's pointed out that in the last session, when we were doing the rate study, we did out about, for $400,000, we put in reserve to help pay for the upcoming water plant, which is gonna cost around fifteen million, so, that's a cost, though, that we need to keep putting aside that money for future expenses, so, but we're putting that in reserve.
I would argue that the city electric plant is an asset of the city, and that's why the citizens of the city of Grandbury should be voting on it. Not, it's not really related to who you're getting your service from, it's an asset of the city, and we are, we are making a decision here on whether or not to authorize our council to sell an asset of the city.
Yeah, what you have to understand is that the, a lot of the utility bonds are, although they're backed by revenue, some of those utility bonds are bought, are, are backed by general fund taxpayers. So if in fact this is not handled properly, then we go get the taxpayers of the city to pay for it, so you would, you got some interest in this stuff, so don't, don't think you don't, so... All right, we, we were adamant, we wanna answer all the questions, so, you got one answer to ask?
One more question, Wayne. How much, if, if we were to pay, how much of this revenue goes to pay off our bond? And how much longer are we in debt to those bonds after the bonds are paid off? Would we be in a profit?
Well, the bonds run, right now, the average is around twenty years, right? And once we issue the fifteen million for the water plant to be done in 2017, I guess, that's...
But that, does that happen, do we use that money cross-functionally, like...
Well, what were you asking? Okay, on the utility fund, were you asking about the utility fund bonds?
How much is that specifically to electric? And is it broken down that way, or do we use the money on bonds to go city water?
We use, the revenue bonds are how much, you work with that every day?
Yeah, over thirteen million dollars.
Thirteen million dollars, okay, for revenue bonds, and then five million for GOs?
Yeah, four point seven.
Four point seven for GOs, okay? So there's seventeen, seventeen and a half, eighteen million dollars of bonds currently out there, okay? That roll off over different periods of times, and I know all of our bonds have an average life of twenty, two years.
But that's not just electrical, right?
That's not just electrical.
So if we were to sell our utility company, you're saying that we'd have to sell it for enough to pay off the bonds, basically?
Payoffs.
But that would be paying off...
A portion of the bonds.
Electrical and water?
Well, some would be water and sewer, yeah, but not all of it, okay? We could still have bonds.
Would we ever get to the point where we pay off that portion? Or would we constantly be needing to borrow?
We're constantly borrowing money. This fifteen million dollars we're getting ready to fund, that's almost as much as we've got total in the utility fund, and we're getting ready to issue those bonds in two years. So there's another fifteen million going on, okay?
I, I think what Councilwoman Myers was asking was, the fifteen million bond that y'all sold for electrical, was all that money put into the electrical, or was that money spread, spread out over water and sewer?
No, we didn't do the fifteen million dollar, we, currently we have eighteen million, like seventeen and a half, eighteen million dollars of utility bonds. Most of those are water and sewer. Maybe two or three million is electric.
Yeah, very small portions.
Very small portions of electric.
Okay, but the electrical is not paying those bonds?
Electrical now is paying those bonds, plus they're paying some of the water sewer.
So I think what Councilwoman Myers was asking...
Because, because we have committed the revenues to pay those bonds by all three utilities.
Okay, but, but electrical's paying their share of it, and what she's saying is, to save the, owe two billion dollars, yet we paid that two billion all. But that, how much would that drop on us? On the bottom line?
It's probably three or four million dollars, so we have to raise the water rates to make sure we depend on the bonds. So, probably four million. So we raised the water rates and sewer rates on up, if we kept those bonds and paid off two billion of the electric.
Is this your city manager? I have a question.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure I understood all of what's going on. Uh, most of our questions have been directed as to if we voted in favor of selling the company. What would happen if we didn't vote for that? What would be, what would be the result?
Yeah, we went over that.
I thought we did, I just wanna make sure. It's not a true sale?
That's what happens if you don't put this up.
So then what, what's the city's position then? We just go ahead and negotiate smaller contracts again? Or longer ones?
Well, it would be, like, depending on the market prices, those time periods, electric utility rates would be adjusted based on the prices for the shorter terms. You just heard a council member say he was in favor of shorter term going forward. And that's the safest thing to do, it, it's the safest thing to do, you're always in the market when you're two or three years out, so...
Thank you.
Okay, well, it's a, it's a tough decision, and we hate it, and we can't take a position, and not that we hate it, we just, the citizens have raised this issue, and they're gonna decide this issue, and the council has just, has provided a format for them to do it. So please go out and vote, it's your, it's your citizen, your neighbors that are citizens to come out and vote, and we'll see you May 10th. Thank you very much.